All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Mark Linkus of the Open Door Baptist Church to provide an invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item we have on the agenda tonight is we have a presentation from our junior Appalachian musicians. So, Mr. Lloyd?
Here I am, the oldest jam student. You guys are here to review With Jam about all about how we do them, and they go to this and we got shut down. Junior Appalachian musicians have not spread to all states.
If y'all spend time with Jim and they're not scared of adults, we're perfectly safe.
Wow, that's really awesome. Great, thank you guys.
Yeah, I've got all my.
We've talked Savannah here. Savannah's a good representation of what we have in mind. She, uh, she helped teach this bunch. She's one of the youngest young instructors that brought all over the place. She, uh, that was three years ago, so she's not going to do that. And she represented With County so well. She was at the International Bluegrass Music Association. She's been a volunteer for a while. She's been a volunteer for a while, so she's going to be around. She goes pretty different side backwards.
Someone's doing the hand.
I need you to teach me.
Your generation's made this program possible, so we're going to talk to, I think, kids that have all, that all had a good time. Fixing sort of second semester in March. So this is only a small, small portion of it, so we, you know, as time goes on, but this was me and Dennis' group, so we went through that. So thank you for having us.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Great job.
And you want everyone to stay the best you can.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. And, uh, thanks to all the parents, because I, I know in the, the early days when they were learning, they didn't sound that good, so. I took a lot of practice, but thank y'all.
Thank you all for coming.
Well, starting by me. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. All right, moving on to the agenda, next item, citizens' time. I know there are several people, uh, signed up to, uh, speak about the, uh, bridge on Lee's Road. So if you don't mind, I'm going to group all of y'all together, because we usually try to take notes and then just make, make it easier for us to keep all our notes in one place, so, um, I am going to skip around a little bit. But if I do miss you, raise your hand if you've signed up. Um, first person signed up we'll hear from is Mr. Jerry Blevins.
My lab report for this reporting period shows a mild level of bacteria. On February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at twelve to two P M, a lady lies for missed with. And at six thirty seven P M, a television's power signal branch. Over sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, television headphones for missed with, and a small flash light was missed with. On February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, outside light turned on in double garage. And on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five, I didn't have my, had no one more to cheer. And ten pounds of air was missed now, my tire, the car tire, while party watch. On February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven twenty three P M, a TV signal was in a third rhythm, channel seven, hold on. On February twentieth, my computer was missed with, and the bomb died between five forty six P M and six oh three P M. Mother and daughter was here, coming from four twenty-four, fisher truck. On February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, ten pounds of air, roll out my tire, tire, car tire, while party watch. I know it wasn't the same color tire as the eighteenth. On February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, my computer was missed with. And on February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at five twenty P M, my copier, printer, camera was missed with. The empty machine there, next to the bin, and there's a small athletic weight from him, the athletic weight, which fisher box, on my tractor. I took it out, taking my tractor leadership, I was in one before the weight was probably coming off. I immediately went home, and I straightened earlier, the leadership told me to go and find two square plants, so most that could be turned behind. I stayed in the seat for it, I used the time to clamp to the lead and stop. Why would two square plants come loose after two years without any problems? These might be a bench, something government's willing to wage war on anybody chooses, and that includes its own citizens. Is this a possible reason why the countries should come and act for us and building alliances against us? Whenever you're taking a gun, you're like a wreck from the false pretenses that raise the tension level around the world. And what allows other countries to come after us? And thank you, sir, special letting you come, I love everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. All right, next person's Ms. Meyer, Ms. Linda Meyer. Everybody else is on the blue dragon.
Uh, so you want to wait with that?
No, go ahead. You're the first one.
Of course, I'm very concerned. It upsets the whole area. And we understand that the VDOT has protocol and so on, but we really don't need a public hearing. We need the bridge fixed as quickly and as soon as possible. Either fixed or a new one, or whatever they're going to do. We're not really concerned about what it looks like. A bridge is a bridge, and we need it as quickly as possible. So that's Lee's Road, okay. Um, the other thing is, I had in January, and I had asked you about the Forest Sustainability Fund. That was grant programs that were sponsored by our legislature, um, last year, and I had not heard anything about that. Uh, the Virginia Backcountry Horsemen, we did receive our legacy grant, and we will be starting this August in fixing that two point, uh, excuse me, eight point five section from, uh, Route twenty-one over to Hales Lake Road. Um, that's a two-year project, working with Forest Service and so on. But any resources we can gather would be very, very helpful. Um, let's see, also, I have, I gave some of you guys these things. We're going into this season with our spotted lanternfly. Here is information, if we could get this onto our website, Wolf County website, it's very, very important.
Just say it in earphone.
Okay, these are for the other people that don't, and for Mr. Hankins, and here's more posters and so on. So we need to get these out, we need to get this information on our county website, so everybody, uh, can take, uh, have, be aware, because the season's going to be, um, you know, here, you know, quite a while. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer, and thank you for your work with the spotted lanternfly. Next person, you're going to have to help me out, Mark.
Zammott.
Zammott. I was ninety-eight percent correct, but that two percent worried me.
Very close. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your service to the citizens of With County, we appreciate it. My name is Mark Zammott. I own and operate a business in Withville, and I'm fortunate enough to be married to a lady cattle farmer in Portland, which leads me to my concerns tonight. We all know it's a hardship. We've got farmers that have things going on both sides of the bridge. They take the ten-plus mile trip, fifteen minutes, get to the other side, they go back fifteen more minutes. You know, in a day, they make do five to ten trips. You know, that's a couple hours, that's maybe a hundred miles, that's equipment and gas. It is a hardship. Uh, this evening, VDOT has done their due diligence and is going to offer us alternatives to repair the bridge. The new structure, parallel to the existing bridge, is the most expensive and is going to take upwards to three years to complete it. I think the hardship is there, we don't have three years to do a new structure. I was pleased to see that they have a partial rehabilitation project to repair the bridge. We were halfway convinced it was going to have to be torn down, but they're going to make a proposal to rehabilitate it. Cost is very good, time is less than a year, sixteen months, that's great. I think we need to consider this. They have another rehabilitation project, which is to basically take the bridge down, redo it in a shop, bring the parts back, do parts, put it back together, it would be fabulous, but it's big dollars. In fact, the first option to do the partial repair, we can do it four times every twenty-five years and save money. But if I had my pick, I'd think with the money there, let's do the rehabilitate completely the old bridge. We have the road. We're not taking what might be the best property, creek bottom property in Cripple Creek and taking it so we can put a road on. Makes no sense. Again, time is critical. I think we need to move forward, look at these proposals, and take care of the bridge right where it is. I will throw one aside. If the new bridge is built and we have a two-lane bridge, the sheriff's department will probably have to station somebody down there because it's a racetrack already with a single lane. Two lanes will never be able to stop them. Again, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, next person's Todd Music.
Well, my neighbor done talked, and what he said sounded pretty good. Uh, I'm a fan of keeping the bridge, I think it's a big asset to the community. But bottom line, the price of one point four million is pretty much a no-brainer. Get it fixed the fastest, neither of us got to give up land to get it done, and we don't have to make a ten-mile loop to try to get it back. I'm just curious, is there a VDOT guy here tonight, or?
They will be making the presentation.
Okay. Pretty much, he said everything that I wanted to say, so we're good.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next up is Chalk Hurdle.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with fixing the bridge as fast as we can, because we're getting terrible buying on the farmers. I'm a farmer, but land on one side, really land on the other. Sure made my trip a whole lot longer. My only question is, if the VDOT, has it been considered of repairing the bridge we have now and some work, and getting traffic flowing, and some work in the future, considered, so? We may need, you know, with other stuff going on, we may need a two-lane bridge. To consider the possibility of doing that once traffic is flowing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pastor Linkus? He signed up, uh, he must have signed up. You want to sign up for each? No. William Hurdle? He lives on Old Banks, I thought maybe he had a opinion.
What are you saying?
I was talking about the, the pastor that signed up, he lived on Old Bank, I thought he wanted to speak.
My consensus is about the same as everyone else, it's the same as my brothers. We need, we need a bridge fixed quick as we can, and then sometime here in the future, I, I don't know when, but I think we need to rock the bridge, because a lot of equipment, farm equipment, you can't get across it now. But the inconvenience of it is, is terrible, and if you meet somebody, you go up the tank road, I've placed on the tank road, and you meet somebody, say you're in, you got a cattle trailer, and you meet, you meet somebody else with a trailer. One or two of you might have about a half a mile in there, up and down that road. And it, and then the nearest place to get diesel from Cripple Creek is Speedway. It used to take fifteen minutes to get to Speedway, it takes thirty-five, forty minutes to get to Speedway now. So around here, you got more than an hour to go to Speedway by. And it's, it's just, it's a, a big hindrance to anyone that does it. Especially farms, uh, pulling equipment, or cattle trailers, or what, fifteen minutes. And that should be taken into consideration, is that the speed of getting the food fixed, this one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdle.
Thanks, William.
Jeff Dunstley? Jeff?
Jeff Dunstley, with the resident also, uh, full-time farmer. All agreements on the bridge, we, I think, get for all of us, um, is a really big issue, get from farm to farm for all our neighbors, a big headache, number one. Uh, number two, there's no detour signs whatsoever, none, of either side of the bridge. So we have constant vehicles going up darn roads, trying to have a clue how to get to the other side. Zero detour signs. My understanding, for many, many years, this bridge is inspected every six months by VDOT. Okay? This problem didn't happen over the last guys. So, six months spans, they should have had a, a reading and an idea of what was going to happen in the future, and had a plan of those. Uh, we see what the plan is, it takes, uh, many, many months to have anything done or fixed, um. My understanding, the day the bridge was closed down, VDOT was there doing their six-month inspection. I'm not going to name names, there was a certain farmer running tractor trailers through these roads. I've been told hearsay, hundred thousand pound weighs. In fact, I understand this is not where the bridge was left because of our farmers. But this particular farmer running this tractor trailers up and down this road on inspection though, then VDOT sees what's going on, and the bridge damage. And I was told they loaded three ton, wait a minute, wait a minute. Guy still crosses the bridge with the headlights, let's shut it down. Why wasn't, wait some measures there, doing their responsibility also, the police this? So, puts us behind on everything else, but probably somebody else's duties. Anyways, I, I'm in agreement, I, I would like the bridge repaired as soon as possible, so we get things done. It's, it's really, uh, time for all of us.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, last person we have signed up is Richard Music.
Living around, I've been farming that place more than, longer than anybody out here. Probably live here, I don't know, through fourth grade. We live right there, it's always been, uh, being available, and, uh, these farmers, we're not the problem. We, we don't have the equipment that pays for the tons, but they're in the process. You know? We got any land oversight, we have taken around, it ain't nobody's. You know, except tractor trailers that want to come through, and it's the other, uh, heavy loads that, uh, bust through there, and they don't need to be on the road anyway. When they come across that road, they got to get on St. Peter's Road. They put me in a ditch, they put Son in a ditch, maybe a tractor trailer on anyone, either road. Arrow Road, Lee's Road, or, uh, St. Peter's Road, we won't be in a ditch, random. And they don't know how to ride, and we work. You know, and I thought I would get a, a chance to listen to the technical part of the presentation, of what's wrong with the bridge, and how much weight we're carrying right now. I know it's not broke, if it didn't fall down, then, you know, my observation, you know, I like to know what needs fixed. Some kind of a hack, hack, hack way engineer, I guess I'd say. Uh, if I got a degree in it, I might be able to help them, figure out some solution to keep trucks off that. Thank you. Cousin and neighbor had a real good idea. Put you a beam about as two foot underneath that on either side of it, and you won't have to worry about a truck that are overweight. Uh, first you know, it's, you know, stop the problem, you know, you know, you know, it's a, it's a, you know. And what, yeah, and I, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be very long, you know, to do that, one thing, it's weight. Oh, we won't, it doesn't carry on, uh, carry across it. Well, practically six or eight thousand pounds, that ain't more than that, three. Fixing the problem, address the problem, then the problem, not the other, not the normal system. The road don't think that way, it shouldn't be on there, or it's all, and they ought to enforce some of the rules, laws, and then it wouldn't have. Maybe, maybe probably do a little bit of talk, like that's my mind, but I like to know. That's my rule.
All right.
I didn't come to talk, of course, I came to talk, hey. I didn't come to talk, of course, I came to talk after.
Thank you, Mr. Music. All right, that's all we have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. We'll get through these other items and then we'll hear from VDOT. Next item on our agenda is a payment of invoices. Each board member received a copy of the invoices in their board package. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Terry, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and discuss? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh, 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 uh.
So approved. Next item we have is the minutes of our previous meeting from February the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So I'm gonna have a motion by Mr. Burnett. I have a second. Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Here none, all those in favor, signal five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We move into old business. Our first item is our VDOT presentation about the leaves road bridge. Mr. Baird?
Mister, Mister Fowler will lead the discussion here on. I think he's gonna start with an introduction first.
Yeah, well, I'll go ahead and start first.
Okay.
Topic of discussion right now. And as you know, I'm a residency administrator with the, so we deal with maintenance. Like we use a real thing, various counties. I'm not, I'm not a bridge engineer, um, and the bridge engineer is actually, um, in Bristol. He's a Bristol district engineer. And, um, basically they have presented this presentation and I'm, I'm basically gonna present that as the messenger. As you are. Don't shoot the messenger. So I'm gonna do my best to present what the bridge division has presented to me to, to you guys today. So basically, in response to the resolution, um, that you guys have set forth to expedite the replacement or repair of this bridge. The bridge division has prepared, um, three options. And, uh, some of the citizens have already mentioned these options. And, um, basically, one option is a complete replacement of the bridge. Remove the existing bridge and replace with a new bridge. Uh, that's, that is the long term, um, option. It's gonna take thirty-three months from start to finish to design and build that bridge at a cost of seven million dollars. Option two, which I'm hearing tonight, sounds like the, the most popular option. Is, uh, from the VDOT standpoint, we would agree. Option two involves repairing the existing structure. Um, uh, creating, as this gentleman here spoke about, uh, strengthening the bridge by replacing the, uh, the, the beams underneath and the floor system. At, at a cost of one point four billion dollars. And that total timeframe is sixteen months. Um, option three. In, um, you know, in response to the, uh, input that we've had from the county. As far as the existing bridge being a historical structure, um, there are a few citizens that would like to see that bridge stay in place as a historical structure instead of removed and, and displaced at another location. And so, and VDOT's, Bridge Division's response to that is, uh, this option three, which is six point one million. And it involves purchasing right away. It involves leaving the existing bridge in its, in its current place, creating a walk-in bridge, if you will. And then, uh, next to that, you guys have a presentation there. I'm on page four. Uh, you can see in the, in the yellow area, that yellow area indicates, uh, right away that would have to be purchased. So the adjoining landowner would have to be willing to, uh, sell that right away to VDOT. And in doing so, if that were to take place, then you would build a new bridge beside the existing bridge. Beside, and so basically the yellow area, um, represents the, uh, right way that would have to be purchased in order to realign the road bed and build the new bridge beside the existing bridge. Yeah, that's quite a case. I think that's option one. Let the new period. Yes, that's option one. Yes, seven million, sorry. That's the longest term project. Then the other is to, um, is to leave the bridge in place. And then the other, uh, option is to remove the bridge, completely install the bridge. So it sounds to me like, and, and their, VDOT does not require a public hearing from this. Uh, basically what, what we, VDOT life from the board is, is your input based on constituencies on which option we think would serve the county the best. I mean, obviously we hear, and, and it may be that the board decides to do a public hearing, that you do, uh, schedule or do that. To hear all, all the county's input, but it sounds like most of the folks that, that are here live in that area. So it sounds like we're getting the input that we want to hear from the local citizens. And, um, so with that said, the, the board can, uh, recommendation to VDOT that we go with alternative two. And we, basically repair the existing bridge and leave it in place as is. But basically, once that repair is completed, the bridge would have the strength to, to, to hold whatever can fit inside. So basically, tractor trailer traffic, it shouldn't, GPS need a truck, a big truck down that road. If it can fit through the bridge, when this option two is complete, we would be able to handle it. So it's, I don't need a resolution, basically, if, if, if the board, uh, sees fit, we could move forward with alternative two. If you need more time to examine this, this presentation of the options. We could, we could move forward at the next meeting, but we're hoping to, whatever option the board.
Andy, oh, with the, the option two, with the, I guess, quote unquote, partial rehab. You talked about the, or it says that there's, um, no posting for the, the weight limit. I think the gentleman brought up a good point about the, the tractor trailers, um, that are, that are, that were using the bridge. Um, with that option, you give an expected life of a structure for twenty-five years. If VDOT was to restrict that to a certain weight limit, how would that extend that life of the structure?
Um, and I'm just gonna give my best answer on that based off the conversation I had with the bridge engineers there today. He said, once this is complete, he said that twenty-five year life, that, his exact words were just kind of talking. So that doesn't mean that the bridge is gonna fall in twenty-five years. So during that twenty-five years, as we continue to make it's on the bridge. So it, as far as the weight limit, once this, this option, this would be the one that they complete. The, the large trucks, fifty-three footers, whatever load that could fit through that bridge. This, I'm not using technical terms, I'm just using what John gave me today. If it can fit through the bridge, it can handle it. And so basically thi- this gives this, this bridge another twenty-five years of life. Uh, on the portion of the structure. Now, obviously, they would be more, they would be more, as that twenty-five years approaches.
And so Andy, is there anything that we can do to restrict the fifty-three footers from using that? That stretch road, because that, that road, I mean, you're coming through there in a, with a cattle trailer. I mean, you're taking up a lot of that road.
Yeah. And that, that would be, um, rushing away a bit. Because basically, um, you can't restrict, uh, vehicles from using that. And so if, if the bridge is designed to handle that load, VDOT can't restrict it from the truck. And that would be a, a border transportation problem. And I, I can, I can find out detailed, detailed answers for that, but I don't think we can restrict it.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to know. I mean, it's, it's a one lane bridge. And you're coming down, especially if you're coming by, by Mr. Huddle's, or Mr. Dunkley's place, back to Ravens Cliff. I mean, that's, that fifty-three foot truck is, is just too big.
All right, I mean, there's places on St. Peters. On the other side. I mean, yeah, I, I'd be interested in that answer. And I, you know, I understand that's kind of on your wheelhouse and, and and I know you said, don't shoot the messenger, and I'm not going to.
We're not.
But I do have a question.
Come here.
Where did the state drop the ball on this stuff? Because I said it and you weren't at the meeting a couple of months ago. However long ago they used to have cripple creek days. I used to go and I'd hear people talking about, well, VDOT's gonna do something to the bridge, they're gonna rehab the bridge, they're gonna, you know? And they ain't had cripple creek days in years. I mean, I've heard that since the mid nineties and nothing was ever done. So, I mean, where did the ball get dropped to the point we're at now?
And that, and that, I wish I could answer that, but.
I mean, that was probably for your time.
Yeah, and the reason I can't answer is because the, I, I'm not sure exactly how the bridge division has their stated good repair schedule set up and how frequent that they inspect the bridges. Uh, and maybe that, you know, we would, we have to have a bridge engineer. He can actually answer specific questions, but I don't have time to say this, since we wanna get moving on this bridge project. For another meeting, but, uh, I guess.
No, I mean, firstly, I, you know, I, I'll make, I'll give you my recommendation and everybody else can chime in. You know, we've heard from, uh, excellent cross section of people using, I don't live there. But we've hit pretty much every age group, no offense to the older folks. Um, and I guess Jeff Dunkley's a good one. They all agree that, you know, they're good with the rehab. You know, I'm glad they said that. I wanted to save the bridge, but I don't live over there. You know, the, the jam kids, I think it's great that they're keeping that type of music. They're wearing the vehicle with them, you know, I don't risk anything past that nineteen eighty-five. So I love old stuff. I'm glad everybody come up and said they wanted to save it because I was scared to death, I want one of them ugly concrete bridges up there. Because again, I don't live there. But that's, you know, I don't want to wait another meeting because that's another month. And if y'all say sixteen months, the sooner we, you know?
So if we, if we go that route tonight, what's the timing from the night to, does it start tomorrow, the sixteen months?
Yeah, I'll call the bridge engineer. I'd like to see the options two move forward.
Now, is that real sixteen months or is that government sixteen?
No comment. I think it should be. Again.
And I didn't say VDOT. Now, I, I, it's moving at the speed of government. I understand.
I, I would wanna hope that John, John put this presentation together. He's the bridge engineer that's behind this. And you know, I mean, basically, he's very thorough with his presentation. It actually made it easier on me to stand up here because I technically don't know anything about the leaves road bridge, what it takes to repair. But I will say that if, if John put sixteen months on there as a, as a terminal date for this bridge, I think this should be.
And one more question, I'm sure that, uh, since this is, will be redone and can hold more weight. That means we can put more Christmas, or somebody can put more Christmas lights on, right?
Yeah, and I think, uh, I joked at previous meeting that those Christmas tree lights are actually what's holding the bridge together.
Sounds like something I'd say.
Andy, uh, I'm sorry, I also agree with that option. I do wanna say, if there's not signage up for the detours, can we make sure that happens tomorrow?
Yeah, I, I thought it was in place, but apparently it's not, so I'm gonna get with the bridge engineer tomorrow with that on his way.
And I know we, we've discussed it already, at least once.
First thing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Gene Horn just sent me an email. He's probably here to buy due to death in the family.
I'm glad you said that.
But he, uh, he indicated that he supports moving ahead with preparing the bridge as possible, and I just wanted to mention that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go with option number two.
So I'll second that.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any more questions or discussion? Here none, all those in favor, signal five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's our recommendation. Tick tock.
All right, and I will take a few more minutes of your time on some other. Three, a few awesome things. First, I'd like to introduce Mark Rearing. He is, uh, our new assistant residency engineer. He replaced Pam, she moved on to back to the residence. So he started yesterday, so Mark will be come up with a speech. And, uh, he, he had orientation yesterday. He actually came from, uh, Longyear with, uh, more Carolina transportation. Two years. So he brings a wealth of information to VDOT and we're glad to have him here at the residency. Been working with you guys. Mark's gonna be, basically, he's gonna take everything that Pam was already working on. She's kind of holding double duty, she's working at Amington. And she's also helping Mark get out of maybe to the position and make sure that everything that we're working for you guys on doesn't fail. Doesn't fall behind. So Pam, she's doing a good job every afternoon, coming over today, making sure that, uh, everything that we're working on is true and forth.
Welcome, Virginia. Just don't try to sell us on that concrete like y'all got down there in North Carolina.
Exactly.
I've always been a Virginia rich.
Okay. So you're used to smooth asphalt.
He, he, he lives in Bracey County. And, um, just, Stephen had mentioned this the other day. And so I just wanted to bring it to your all's attention. Um, we're coming up on, uh, secondary six-year plan, yearly allocations. I haven't received allocations yet, but if you guys want to be, you know, just taking notes, hearing your constituents. And basically, just keep that list handy of routes that you'd like to see added to the six-year plan. And then as we move closer to mid to late March, I think around late March, I should be receiving allocations. So I'll be able to actually review the amount of name miles that we can add to the six-year plan. And at that point, we'll move through the process in April. We'll meet, we'll talk about the roads and you guys can vote on which we'll put on the plan. And then in May, we'll have a public hearing and that, and set up the plan of those.
I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if y'all have any roads that you want them to look at and see if they meet the, the requirements or whatever. Go ahead and email those saying, I'll get a list together and get to them, and that's, can help the process and they can come up with some. Process and everything on it, we can put those numbers and all that.
And I'll just, any of you guys have any issues or concerns, anything you're hearing from your citizens that you want to get to?
Dry road and crew road, there's several potholes and I know it's not pothole season yet, but. I had occasion with the over there the other week and a couple of them are pretty sizable.
Fifty-two outward standing for, Mr. Fowler, has some pretty good potholes that you can search.
Red Hall Road, it's got some pretty good potholes in it. East Lee Highway from exit eighty-four to exit eighty-six. And then Route ninety-four, it's all in church style.
And I know it's a town retreat problem, but right in front of the driveway at two hundred mountain, you have those. They, they punish me for being on the board, cause they won't patch it a pothole right there.
What was that address again?
Call Jason, he's well aware.
And then, Mr. Fowler, I just got one question. We still on track for a round, right?
Yes, actually, I was on the phone with Pam. It's nice, all of our revenue sharing and rural addition projects. And Pinwood, Orion, and Bentwood. Of all, the funding has been approved. And Amy Frye of, uh, rural addition, revenue sharing, Gunga Crystal. As, uh, she's working with Stephen on the agreement documents.
Y'all will be approving those documents tonight or sign those and get them back to you then?
And then other projects that were made for revenue sharing and rural addition. Um, we had looked at Smith Road, and it was denied the positive grade.
Oh, that's great.
That's far exceeds the agreement that we got to take over this system. That one didn't make it, and, uh, let's see, Meterview Lane, an estimate was provided to, listen. Uh, of three hundred seventy-five thousand to take in the first one point one mile from last reflect. So, that one's in its process now, so you, I guess we'll be able, we're going to have to back through. And.
Well, it's at point two, yes.
Yeah, maybe give me as much as possible. And, um, Bertha Farms, um, two estimates were set for two to two to.
And I've, I've talked to Mr. Burton about that, and we are going to, we're trying to work up a business for doing the first part of the. The big city intersection right there and, and get that. But it's like ninety-seven parts of it.
All right, now, under the backup, I mean, send it to the video, send it to the guy. Do you, you have Red Hollow Road potholes, East Lee Highway between eighty-four and eighty-six?
That's Route ninety-four from Silent Church to Island. There's quite a bit of guardrail damage over there.
And speaking of guardrail, our guardrail contractors believe that's perfected tomorrow. And we're meeting with the guardrail contractors, wanting to. And, you know, Stephen contacted me about the D A W interest. Other sides of the day is going up, and that's going to be part of it. But I know that your date is March fourteenth, and we're gonna do everything we can to, to get the contractor there before the thirteenth.
Right away.
So, I'll keep you posted as well.
And then, uh, lot scout, the guardrail, our team, I seen, you have been there, Mark, it's, I don't know where it is on the news, but it's, it's written in the paper itself. It's from Chris Johnson, but.
And Andy, while you're talking, um, I know you hit your ditching through out of the cove the other week. But they're still out and about on dry roads, and I know the layout of the road, so it's sparse. But it's. Places where it's flood loaded, right? They've done a heck of a job, but I don't know if they were ditching or digging for gold, but.
Yeah, the, uh, V I is, is basically they designed a metrics that we, was, was, they put in place, and they've already started trying to meet the numbers. So, uh, one of the criteria that we need to meet is, uh, ditching. So, you're gonna see a big focus on ditching. And, uh, you know, there's pipe replacement for, uh, the cold pipes, the cold pipes. And, uh, there's roadside vegetation, so all three of those tasks are, that's not. And let's see. We mentioned something to you. Ken's.
Ken's my bridge, okay.
Um, the bridge superintendent called me yesterday, and they were coming out to take over it, so.
Great.
I know you asked before on that back in the fall, and, uh, so now I got lost with the show. But they're gonna cut them to that degree, so.
Okay, as long as it's done before summer, I'm happy. Thank you.
Just, just thank you for taking care of the ponding on Pepsbury Road and Mike's Mills, uh, have that water we got, so. Those are those are pleased with that.
All right, anybody have anything else strange?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. And feel, feel free to leave, so you can make a phone call. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And before everybody takes off, thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you all. I just want to say for the boring part.
Thank y'all. All right, we have anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
I am not aware of any old business.
Um, I've got one under appointment, um. On my way up here tonight, I got a call from, uh, Angelina Lloyd. And she's gonna have to resign for the Mount Rogers Board. Um, she's got a, she's taken a job that's going to create a conflict. Um, but I did, and, and I know they talked about this before. Um, I do have somebody that may be interested in, um, Brian Baller of the Police Department. And I know they've expressed having somebody from law enforcement on the board, so if you can get me, do they meet once a month? Do you even talk?
It's once a month.
Yeah, could you get me whatever their schedule is? He said it would be interesting if he could fill it in some.
Yeah, be glad to.
All right, moving into reports, we have a treasurer report, Miss Gwen. It's easy to see now.
Well, Gwen is a kid when I sit down, so it's kind of hard to find you here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Had a lot to happen since, um, I was here last, so glad to be able to report on that, but we'll touch on the financial statements to begin with. Um, excuse me, in the consolidated account, you'll see that we have a balance of eighty-six million, three hundred eighty thousand, six hundred and two dollars. And of that, the general fund balance is forty-three million, eight hundred eighty-seven, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. And when you look at your financial statement, you'll notice on that first page for general fund under the full cash. It's only listing, um, the nineteen million plus balance there. But you also have to take into account, um, as mentioned in the meeting that I was at in, uh, December. That I had transferred money out to the Virginia Investment Pool. Um, we actually transferred forty-eight million dollars out to VIP. So, tho- those numbers are showing on page two about middle ways for you on that financial, um. And it's labeled VIP General Fund, um, with a balance of close to twenty-five million there. So, that's the general fund balance, and it's comprised of those two numbers. Um, VIP had a really good rate at the time. I had, um, been able to negotiate a, a rate with our bank. Um, it wasn't quite where I wanted it to be, so I transferred money out. Um, they have now come back and they're begging for us to return our money to the bank. And they have given us a, uh, pretty good offer, but I'm currently in discussions with them on that. So, there may be a possibility that he may only have maybe one more, maybe two more financial statements, and you'll see. A lot of money still in the VIP fund, because they're, uh, they're actually offering us a rate that's pretty competitive with VIP right now. So, um, they didn't want to work with me to begin with, now they do, so. We're, that's where we're at, so, um, as I continue that, we'll see how that goes. And in all probability, I'll be transferring the majority of that forty-eight million back to the bank.
Have you asked them about knocking off that, uh, charge for credit card?
Credit card fees, um, that's a discussion, but nothing's really been, it was just kind of, yeah. When it came to that, so that is an item that I am discussing with them. Um, which, um, I don't know, we'll, we'll see how it goes, but, um, we're, we're not the only locality that they dropped on that. Um, um, of course, town with them and other locality as well, and several others that went down into the New York Valley, so. I don't know if they would, um, I don't know what our funds are like compared to other localities, if they would be willing to pick that up. But it is a topic of discussion with the, the, um, the bank president, so we'll see what happens. We may be moving some money again over the next few days to a week, um, which will, um, change these VIP accounts. And move money back to that, um, that National Bank General Fund, and this is where the first change is.
If they was that quick to get with you to bring the money back, forty-eight million's a good part.
I moved money January the eleventh, and I had gotten an email, uh. Not last week, but the week before, about the time our real estate bills, uh, went out in the mail. And, um, I, I told Mr. Donardo at the time, I said, I, you know, I know over the next few days, we're just gonna be swamped, cause the bills have just come out. Holiday was coming up as well, so we talked, um, after that. And, um, so they're, they're in need of our, our funds, they, um. They're, they're begging, that's basically what it comes down to. And, you know, my, um, in a meeting with the finance director and Mr. Bear the other day, you know. I, I made the statement I asked to begin with, and they didn't want to do anything. And I think they thought I wouldn't move money. But at the time, VIP was paying us one and a quarter percent more than what the bank was offering. So, it was a no-brainer to move money out, because we could make more money there. But now they're offering us a competitive rate, with where VIP is pretty much fluctuating right now. With some options as prime continues to increase, that our rate would increase as well. So, I'm still working on trying to, to get a lot of that ironed out right now.
Well, tell them, tell them we were really, really proud that we were the last counties that did have to pay those credit cards for them. It really hurt us when they got away with it.
Yeah, and it's been very interesting with that, um. A lot of folks, even though our, our bill payment options are on the back of the bills, and I have to sign outside the door, and I have signs on the windows and the camera. A lot of folks, um, still aren't realizing that we're charging, because the last time real estate was out, they could be in the used apartment, there was no extra fee. Um, of course, that's since changed. Um, and as I've said before, some, some citizens don't blink an eye when you tell them there's a fee, they just say, okay. And it, it's kind of, um, kind of interesting, but it's all, you know, to each their own, it's just how everybody, everybody functions. Uh, with that, we, I have seen an increase in our online payments that we're getting in. Of course, the rate is lower through our online portal that I use versus the in-office, um, payment method. So, um, I'm not sure if that's kind of a driving factor there, or if it's just the fact that everybody's like, well, if you're gonna have to pay a fee, I'll just go online. I can control my payment, I'm not having to, um, you know, do it over the phone or come in an office, so. Um, I don't know how the credit card thing will go, we'll give it a shot. Um, it's, it's been discussed, but nothing's really, um. Led me to believe that that's gonna come back, that we would have that agreement, agreement again. Um, but we, we did ride that out for a long time, so we, we were very fortunate to, to have that as long as we did, so. Um, the only other thing is I touched on, of course, real estate bills have since gone out, Ms. Ball and I are very relieved with that. Um, we, we have had, you know, some things, um, it's part of conversion thing of, of how things printed on the bills, but. Um, it's a work in progress, and we, we knew that, we knew this year would, would be a work in progress, and certainly been a long work in progress. But, uh, we're slowly, you know, working those things out and, and doing everything we can, um. We've been extremely busy in the treasurer's office since the bills hit, uh, two weeks ago Thursday. Today was probably the calmest day that we've had in that timeframe, uh, we didn't have, uh, lines, you know, all day, cause it's kind of been sporadic lines, but. Um, collections seem to be going pretty good there, um, a lot of folks, um. Are telling us that they didn't receive their reassessment notice. Or, um, if they did, they're saying, well, I got something, but I didn't know what it was, in fact, I'm. So, a lot of folks aren't realizing that their assessment isn't as much as it is. There's several that are thinking we're sending them a late notice, so they're uptight, because they see that their bill has increased. So, they feel like that they're late and we're charging them late charges, when in fact, we're not. It is the, the current bill for twenty twenty-two that's normally out in October and due in December. So, you know, we're having to, you know, do a lot of explaining, but, you know, we're trying to get folks to understand, so, um, we're getting there. Tax rebates, um, we have finally had the opportunity to get started on those. That fundamental board, it is a manual process, it will take time, it will take a lot of time, and we'll go as quickly as we can. Um, we've got started last week, we've got a really good start on it, so I'm hoping that very soon we can, um, start getting, um, the first round of checks out. And I'll work with finance department, uh, with Ms. Williams and, uh, with Ms. Woods to, um. We've done a couple of test runs to make sure things that are processed through correctly, there's no issues, we have everything printing the way we need to. So, we've got all of that in line, and, um, we'll be, um, I guess it'd be starting issuing checks very soon. I don't know how quickly they're gonna come out and how big the batch is gonna be, but. If we can start getting some checks out, um, I'm okay with that, because we're, um, you know, it's just, it's just, it's gonna be time consuming, very time consuming, but, um. And I'm sure you all are getting a lot of calls too, because a lot of folks are saying, well, they said they would be out in January, and your period is March. And, you know, we're, we're just kind of explaining all of that, but, um, but we talked to people, we're working on it, I promise we're working on it. So, um, one additional thing, um, I'm proud to say I've had hired a new employee, they're gonna be starting with me tomorrow. So, um, I'm looking to get back to fully staffed, so, um, um, so we go into the upgrade for the system next week. Um, to make you all aware, um, if you're not already, the upgrade will require, um, basically all offices to be closed, um, the eighth and ninth, which is Wednesday, Thursday, next week. Talking about the ATD right through today, we mentioned there might be a possibility of going in Friday, I have no idea. Uh, we'll just have to see how it goes, so we'll, um, come on, we're closed for two days, and everything we do is in that system, that's two days further behind, but. We are, that everybody is, so, um, so you will start seeing things come out, you know, treasurer's office closed, county admins closed, or water department, whoever. Um, we can't take payments, we have no way to process anything, but, um, I'm looking forward to the upgrade, get it done and over with, and there's a lot of. Green pastures that I want to move on to that I've had to wait for, for the upgrade. And I think that is all I have, unless someone has questions, or if there's something that I forgot to touch on, or it's on their.
Somebody have any questions, Miss Gwen?
My bad.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good news, Mr. Ball, still named in the alphabet, senior one of the family.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, Ms. Ball? All right, thank you. Sheriff, Chief Deputy Klein? All right, move on to new business, we have the consent calendar that we received in our board package. Entertaining motion to approve the consent calendar.
So many.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Cook, is there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing no, we roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Uh, uh, uh.
So, for, move on to staff report, we have the, Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, got, uh, three action items for you tonight, um. The first is, uh, we received bids for air packs for Speedo, uh, you all have been told that Speedo's air packs are rapidly becoming unserviceable. Um, so, well, we, we've gone out twice now, the first time we only received one bid, we went out to, to try to get better pricing on the market, uh, the second time. And, uh, those bids came back, the lowest one came back at one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars. Uh, that was from, uh, Sureflow M S A. Um, that met our expectations as far as pricing, uh, it actually was a little better than we got the first time around. Um, we are still trying to get a rural development grant, and Speedo's working with us to try to submit some, some documentation. They're expecting that would knock fifty thousand dollars off of that price and leaving the, the county's obligation at, uh, just over ninety-two thousand. Um, we can, uh, accept the bids tonight if you'd like, or we can hold off until March fourteenth and accept them once we get further clarification from rural development. And I would probably recommend that you hold off until March fourteenth. We were hoping we'd have the answer for you tonight.
Is that something we want to do, if they need them?
If you go ahead and buy them, um, we probably won't be able to get the rural development funding, so we, the county would be on the hook for the full hundred and forty-two thousand. Um, they have enough air packs currently to fight fire for a couple of hours without, you know. Being worried, but anything longer than that, I, I would be concerned for. being worried, but anything longer than that, I, I would be concerned for, for their safety. Um, but they've been going this way for a while. I, I don't think another couple of weeks is gonna hurt that much.
What's going away? I mean, as long as they've got air packs or which way it's about air packs. I assume they're probably not stopped anyway.
Um, there is a lead time in that bid package and I don't remember what it was. I think it was ninety days, so it's, it's a ways off. The uh, second action item is relating to the playground at Ager Park. Um, we, we've talked with the vendor that you authorized us to uh, work with, and they've recommended doing a two-phase approach. Um, that the first would provide your basic playground um, and, and could be set up in time for play uh, by uh, mid to late summer. Um, I sent everyone the uh, proposal that they, they submitted, um, you know, all told, it's approaching. It's over five hundred thousand dollars in, in total expenditures. The first phase uh, would be, I believe, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh, of which we have about two hundred and eighty uh, from the tribal funds that the federal government set aside for uh, purposes that, you know, could include recreational uh, expenses. So uh, we would be on the hook for about ten percent of that first phase um, cost. Um, first phase does not include demolition. We would handle that in staff. Um, and um, just need some guidance from you all on if you want us to proceed with the two-phase approach. If we do the two-phase approach, we can go out and do some fundraising for that second phase, try to defray some of the county's costs. And we, we think that we could probably uh, could probably do that, give it enough time.
All right. What's your pleasure?
All right. Have a motion to move forward with the two-phase plan by Mr. Cook. I have a second. Second. Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion?
Just one question. Do we have the staff? Enough staff for the demolition? Is that gonna be an issue?
We, we've talked to uh, Landon in Buildings and Grounds. Uh, he thinks he has enough staff time. Um, they, they've got the equipment to be able to do it. Um, we don't yet know how much we'll be able to salvage. I know there was a request to salvage uh, some of that. Uh, we, we, we're confident the swing sets can be salvaged, but we're not sure beyond that how much could be. So um, yeah, but, but he does believe that, that the staff can handle that.
Could we, could we also look out at the trade school to see if they've got some function to come out of that?
No, we could certainly make that available.
Maybe able to reuse some of the stuff in some of our programs. Yes, and you would know this.
I can see what, reach out to them and see what they can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that request to, to the schools.
Our just give a slip. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved.
It might be a very good project to have them come and take down all the, the fence things that have the names on them. Just to get all those and we could put those, work with them on getting them restored in some manner to go back up, however we design it in future. That's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, if they could do them like they did the uh, um, auditorium seats that George did. Good idea.
And finally, this is not something that you have to take action on uh, immediately, uh, but it has been suggested and, and I wanna not run it by you. Um, it's been suggested by some of our external funders that we could get more funding for some of the requests, like the uh, the playground. Uh, if we had a five oh one C three charitable uh, organization, um, a lot of school systems do this. I'm not sure if our schools do or not. Um, they, they essentially open another five oh one C three with um, a, a board that's appointed by, by uh, airport supervisors. Um, that they could then go and raise funds from foundations that would support county goals, but from organizations that wouldn't normally give money to local governments for projects. So um, it's not something you have to tell me, go ahead and, and explore tonight. I, I have done this in another locality and I can tell you that I don't wanna be involved. But uh, you know, if, if it's your pleasure, we'll, we'll move forward um, as much as you uh, as much as you want us to.
I mean, I think you helped us down the road. I agree. It's a benefit for sure.
Well, put together some information and put some pros and cons list together and let's look at it, y'all, if you'd like.
And I, I don't wanna take up a lot of time, but I do wanna highlight, th- this is a really good month for animal control. Um, we, we did promote uh, Animal Care Officer Danny Blanchett to the supervisor of, of that department effective February sixteenth. We've had some really productive meetings with staff and volunteers um, after that. Um, since we did promote him, we do have a vacancy in our animal control um, position. And uh, so we're, we're getting ready to conduct interviews for those. Uh, but um, you probably saw some of the, the positive publicity we got out of refinishing the floors uh, at the, the shelter. Uh, we got some, some, uh, some regional news coverage on that. Had a lot of positive response to that. And uh, Mr. Blanchett has also put in place uh, an adoption application that, that we talked about. Uh, you know, getting a process in place to where we can have those on file. We can follow up, make sure that the animals are uh, being properly cared for. Uh, you know, getting the vet care that they're supposed to get, getting the spays and neuters that they're supposed to get. Um, and that adoption process seems to have um, made things go a lot smoother. Uh, we also have an animal shelter attendant. Uh, we're, we're uh, calling her the animal care coordinator. We, we brought her on board. And so she's uh, taking the lead on getting more of our social media uh, presence. Uh, handling the adoption process and handling the care of the animals and the uh, cleaning of the kennels. And so things have been really productive with animal control, um, you know, over the last uh, last couple of months. So I just wanted to highlight what they've been doing. Uh, I know I have other things in my report that you may wanna ask about, but uh, don't wanna hit all of those we don't wanna talk about. I'll be glad to answer any questions I might have.
Somebody have any questions for, for Mr. Hankins?
Uh, Mr. Hankins, I know we, we, we've talked about this several times with the volunteers at Mike's Meadows and then the EMS coverage on that side. But where are we at on that document that we were working on?
Um, I have asked the state to provide us with the model document that would be required. Um, but they have not provided that yet. Uh, I've, I've asked a couple of times over the last couple of weeks. Uh, I will call again tomorrow and see if we can't get that. Uh, we wanna make sure that we include everything that's supposed to be included, uh, so that we're nice and legal. Um, i- if we don't, then I've got some suggestions on the ways that we can move forward and uh, go ahead and start that. I, Chief Haywood and I spent some quality time together out on the side of I seventy-seven last night at a truck wreck. So uh, we, we had the chance to talk about those uh, those issues and, and some of the ways we might be able to uh, overcome them, so.
I think so.
Despite the circumstances, it was good conversation.
All right. Move on to county administrator, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Chairman, first thing I have is BJ triple C A agreement. We have um, Phil Buckingbeckler here from the DSS to help us go through it. The first item is uh, funded contract community services review or supervision agreement. And basically BJ triple C A employee works under the direction of uh, DSS.
Yes, well.
And the first, the first agreement you got is basically it's just that there's a contractual relationship uh, to uh, provide uh, uh, work program to juvenile defenders referred by DJJ through the Criminal Control Act and shall address the supervision of the community services. So I would request Juror's approval of uh, the first memorandum of agreement.
And then entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Uh, so approved.
Second is the memorandum of agreement for the local BJ triple C A funded local provider positions. Um, it's my understanding, this is just clearly establishing that we are hiring this person and this person reports to and works under the supervision of the Department of Social Services. And they are requiring that documentation. The only thing I would just request on the second page, item number six, it says the city county designates with county department of social services. Human resources has been responsible for administration of the agreement. We're just gonna take out human resources and just make it with county department of social services to be responsible. But I would request Juror's adoption of this, so Phil can send this in and meet their requirements.
You don't wanna talk to the lady from Richmond, I know.
Well, yes.
Don't answer that.
Yes, no. You know I've got it.
I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
What, what determines the salary for that position?
Typically, it's in the uh, funding that we receive for that position uh, that comes in and working with DSS on the salary range.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 Uh.
Uh.
So approved.
Thank you, Phil.
One, one more and we're done. Um, the last one, page one fifty-two. Um, they are requiring this year, we have worked together with Blaine County on this to combine both the funds over this. And I don't know how long this Thomas can be on. So basically, they need a resolution, basically uh, that resolves with county board supervisors, accepts and appropriates funding to the act. Until we notify the departments in justice, Department of Justice in writing that we no longer wish to participate. So we would request you all adopt this. I like the language of it. We don't have to worry about it again unless we come out.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Now, thank you, Phil.
At some point, if the board would like for me to provide more details or information about uh, what goes on with the, the June, June off on July, 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 to do so. If you all, if you'd like to do that. No, we don't.
All right.
Thank you. Y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Next is an opioid settlement resolution. Um, you have behind the resolution several participation forms with various entities. Um, what this resolution does, and I'll ask the county attorney to, to jump in where my legal head is not correct. Basically, um, this resolution is authorizing um, our participation in all these proposed agreements. And allows me to sign and execute any of the documents responsible for any of these organizations. So you don't need to approve each of these. If you approve these resolutions, I can then execute any of these agreements uh, that come in, in the process.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have much to add. There is four, one, two, three, four, four or five uh, settlements here that came in this batch. Uh, the resolution was recommended by our outside counsel, which gives good direction on what we need to, to get the funds coming to us. So that's all I have to add.
All right. Let's see. We just need a motion to adopt the resolution. Entertain a motion to adopt the settlement resolution as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
The um, last item is the B dot revenue sharing agreement. Um, they have gone ahead and combined all three of our revenue sharing projects into this agreement. So this is for Orion, Pinewood, and Bentwood. Um, I would request that you all approve this agreement. This basically is indicating that B dot will administer uh, these local funded projects uh, for Orion, Bentwood, and Pinewood. Uh, Orion is, public hearing has happened. It's in place. Bentwood public hearing is March fourteenth, along with five or six other public hearings that we'll be having that night. And Pinewood, we are working on and we're pretty confident that it'll go through, so I would request uh, Juror's approval of this agreement.
So moved. So I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, Supervisor Smith, I would request that you uh, make a motion to authorize the county administrator to go ahead and issue payment for the Orion District to B dot. So what, next meeting?
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. I still don't know, make Mr. Turner laugh.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. County attorney, Mr. Farley?
Sounds like Steve has something left.
Oh.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Um, but if, if you will come back to me, that won't take long. I don't have anything to report unless you have questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Farley? Here and now, Mr. Barrett?
You don't have to wait long. Uh, y'all, attention on the agenda. I would appreciate it.
All right. We'll go to Buildings and, our board reports. First one is the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, the uh, Building and Grounds Committee met on February twenty-first and first on twenty twenty-three, and we made the following recommendations. Approval of change order number three for the county office building addition project.
Right. Come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
The second item is the approval of the increase in rural retreat lake campground rates as proposed by the Parks and Recreation Director. Current rates will be honored for all existing reservations for the upcoming, coming season.
All right. Come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
And that's all we had, Chad.
Ready it, Barrett?
Um, I'm wanting to get it, y'all, right ahead.
Move on to board supervisors time. Mr. Burnett?
Yes, we had uh, had a phone call uh, concerning trash being dumped along Castle and Road in the short turn next to Patterson. And that's all I had.
Like, bags of trash?
Bags of trash being dumped over sleeping bite where the cliff is.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lawson?
Yes, I did have one item, Mr. Chairman. I need to make a motion to appoint Mr. Shay Root to the Law of Honor Committee to replace Wayne Root that I've just appointed like a month ago. I did not realize he was not interested in the altar. So I've talked to the town of Wethville and to Mr. Bear, and it's my understanding I just need to make a motion to appoint Shay Root to that committee.
All right. Have a motion to appoint Mr. Shay Root to the Law of Honor Committee. I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So appoint him.
And that's all I had. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Um, I just have a question on the uh, uh, couple meetings ago. There was money put into uh, some kind of bonds or uh, I already invested. We invested some money. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
Are you talking about when we moved the funds over to that, Ms. Quinn was talking about, to the Virginia investment plan where she moved the forty-eight million dollars over?
Okay, where, oh, there was. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is where did all that money come from? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is where did all that money come from? I mean, did it, did we just move all our money? Or was it invest, we we just certain funds got invested or what?
If if you'll go back to the treasurer's report, um will be the best place to look at it. You will, the the first page shows National Bank and you'll, if you'll notice. You'll see a lot of negatives in the changes from the prior months. Okay, and that um goes down and you will see a total. Of what was in National Bank of twenty three million nine hundred thirty one thousand seven eighty six. And you'll see the change from the prior month was forty seven million. Right beneath that, you will see. The pooled cash balance of what's in the Virginia investment pool. And that totals to forty eight million one twenty six. So that's the forty eight million that she moved. So you can see that. She moved twenty four million out of the general fund. So it's twenty four million in the general fund sitting in there. Um. And if you'll go.
Okay, but these fi- uh are these funds are still accessible if we if we wanted to pull any that we could.
Yeah, yeah, basically what we've got to do and and we would like to change the report to where we just end up showing you. The total general fund and the total of all the others, but it's got to show what's in VIP. So it may end up showing like three different columns. General fund, what's in VIP, general fund, what's in the bank. And you add both of those together and that's what your total general fund is. But all the money is still there. It's just what moved over into the VIP fund is earning the four point seven percent interest. What's in the bank is earning the three point five percent interest. So we couldn't just move forty eight million out of the general fund. Because that's what she writes all the checks out of monthly. So if you move forty eight million out of the general fund. You'd add zero left in the general fund and she'd have been moving money back. So it it it's all there. It's just split between both of those funds on the treasury.
Okay, so if for instance, the sheriff had some programs he wanted to institute, he want to use the. PF fund for it.
Yep.
The three hundred thousand dollars is no longer on his report. It's on this Virginia investment fund. It's still available to you. It's just not.
Yeah, he's got three hundred thousand in the V shown in the VIP account and he's got. Two hundred or three hundred and ten thousand showing in the general fund account. That's just where Miss Gwen keeps it. If they tell you they want to spend two hundred thousand dollars, you all are the approving agency. You'll spend two hundred thousand dollars. They've got. Six hundred thousand dollars. This is just where Miss Gwen is keeping it in the bank. So their expenditures, whatever they want to do with it, run through you all to approve those expenditures. It's sitting there. The only, you know, I mean, we can move it all back to the general fund. And move another amount over there. It just means they won't be earning a higher amount of interest. So uh Miss Gwen and Miss. Williams sit down and tried to break some funds apart. So everybody had a chance to earn a higher interest rate.
Okay.
Before, Mister Cook, all of our money was in National Bank. Every time that we had it, it was all in National Bank. So when I really, when they were renegotiating a little bit off the interest. They um they gave you a rate, but it wasn't as good as VIP was supposed to be. So what this is, it just went for that money that you still have money in National Bank and you still have money with VIP. I can move money out of VIP at any time. It's it's very useful. It's just the same with the bank. I can call in tomorrow morning if we need to move a million or ten million or whatever, we can have the money by two o'clock. So as long as I find that deal, you know, by ten o'clock, we can have it the same day. You have to contact them later in the day with the next day. But all the money is still there. It's just divided or there is that way.
Well, the reason that I was asking was because if you remember back. Several years ago, there was a big one between uh Sheriff King and Sheriff Donegan. And there was money that supposedly was missing out of the police activity fund. And when we came in, we said we weren't going to take any money out of it. Then I noticed there's money missing from it. I would, I mean, I just want to go where it went.
Yeah, all the money is still there. It's just not all still in the account at National Bank. It's not a lot of it. Those items there, but it's still in the treasury now. All of that money is down there for VIP to get the higher interest rate compared with what's at National Bank right now.
Just as long as they got access to it, that's all I.
It's there. So if we ever need to move money back for any account, we can very easily.
With all these accounts at the VIP, it goes back to the same accounts listed here.
I have nothing else.
Mister Smith?
I've got a couple things. Um one, I I want to piggyback off of Mister Burnet. Uh on the uh trash, there's a, I was over in Illinois area over the weekend. It seems like there's a lot of back trash on the road over there as well. Uh and I know Jesse might not be able to get up that way as as often as I am. Plus I've got family in LA and it was sort of pretty rough. So this is people's just going to that forever. Also, if we can look at that, Mister Byrne. Also, uh Whispering Pines. The water and the sewage, this is my understanding that the sewage serves as the entire Whispering Pines.
I think sewer serves everything. Water only serves a portion of it.
Water only goes down like a halfway on the south to north side.
I think that's, yes.
That's what I'm saying. Um so some people has bought some lots there um on the land ticket. But the land card that said it had access to county water and county sewage. Uh but the water doesn't go that far because it's on the other side of where it starts. So we may want to look at that and make sure that the land cards are correct because it's. You know, it's kind of a misleading, you know, for saying it's got county water.
And if if you'll send me some information on the which land cards those are, I will, I'll I'll have Don review it and then. Well, and let her know.
Uh and you know, and I know we're we're driving it from water the rest of the way through the residential area and so. But until, um the last thing I got, Mister Chairman, is the uh, I had a lot of questions about the water tank at the Apex Center. That they were using to water the the floor. Uh is it still there or do we have possession of it?
The county purchased that. Um our department had gone up and winterized um the. The thinking and they had not removed it from the property because one of the things was uh if you remember the county wanted to to purchase that. Um they went up, it was no longer in the building. It was actually pulled, it was actually setting outside and actually have water in it. We're very fortunate that it hadn't frozen. So. They pulled it back and um took it uh took it back over uh to to our property. I did receive a call from um their their operations person uh at the Apex Center. And told them that we would be willing to work with them and I said our concern is number one. We spent seven, eight thousand dollars for that and it 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 needs, you know, it's winterized and it needs to stay there. And I asked them if they would need it, would they be willing to pay us a small rental fee for that? And uh Mister Sayers had looked up some rental prices of what one would cost in the area. So we've offered them that for a rental price if they want to.
All right, Mister Terry. Nothing at this time, sir. Um Mister Barrett, and I don't remember. It was a month, month and a half ago, I talked about. They needed some gravel at Apple House at the um trash center.
Not been a job taken care of yet?
No, I was up there Sunday. It's just as bad. And they've had plenty of time, beautiful weather. They need to get some gravel down there. We'll follow up with that one immediately. And that's me being nice. I'm not going to be nice the next one. All right, next item on the agendas. I'm sorry. Do you have something else?
Yes, I did. Um. But um Blue Star Manufacturing, um may have mentioned this to you all previously. V dot where they are building the connector road, um they need about a half acre of property. Um convey to them and. It's it's not an issue. It's basically uh at the end of where the power line crosses. Down like you're going into lot twenty four where the new gas station sits there. Um it's a half acre property. V dot has sent the request to Blue Star. And requesting that they go ahead and authorize conveying that property back to them. We conveyed that property to Blue Star. The covenants have a right of first refusal that are in place on that. Basically, this is just a resolution saying. With County conveyed at the Blue Star, we have a right of first refusal. We have no issue with it and actually support the the uh uh Blue Star providing this land to V dot for. Um a um for the easement right of way for the connector road. And we request your all's approval on this uh resolution. And then I can send the necessary information to V dot and to uh Blue Star to go ahead and get that taken care of.
All right, I have a motion by Mister Cook. I have a second. Second, have a second by Mister Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? I assume V dot is giving that free.
I think there's a, there's a small fee they're paying for it with the legal fees that they're having to pay right up on it. It it's it's like four or five thousand dollars.
Amazing. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing now will do a roll call vote, Mister Terry. Aye, abstain. Aye, aye.
Abstain.
So approved. Is that approved? We only had three ayes? Okay. Not used to having more than one person. I think so. All right, next item on the agendas, a closed meeting under two point two dash thirty seven eleven eighty one, discussion of personnel matters. County administration and I'm going to add emergency management to that. And two point two thirty seven eleven eighty five, prospective business or industry for Project Sparrow.
If we can also add A twenty nine and expenditure of public funds. Contract.
Okay, and A twenty nine. Have a motion by Mister Smith. I have a second. Have a second by Mister Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're now being closed session. I entertain a motion to come out of a closed session. Have a motion by Mister Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mister Burnet. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're now back in open session on the record. Mister Terry, if you will read the certification.
Whereas the West County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this state facility on affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash thirty seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certi- certification by the West County Board of Supervisors. That such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the West County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge on the public business matters. Lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in this closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And on such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed and are considered by the West County Board of Supervisors. And Mister Chairman, I'll make that a motion, sir.
All right, have a motion by Mister Terry. A second by Mister Smith. We'll do a roll call vote, Mister Burnet. Aye, 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 aye. So approved. Anything else to come forth, Board, Mister Barrett?
I do not know of anything, Mister Chairman.
All right, hearing now will be adjourned.